We're getting on Southfield Board of Education now come to order. I want to welcome everybody back after a brief summer break, as soon as I go back so soon. But I might start with the Pledge of Allegiance and if I can get Mr. Yvonne Smith to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While everybody is standing, if you could remain standing for a minute, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in remembrance of all of the victims of the 911 tragedy, both our heroes as well as the victims who all died on that day. Again, welcome back. My name is Darryl Buchanan and I'm the President of the Board.
I'm Fern Capps, Vice President of Southfield Board of Education.
Yvonne Smith, Secretary of Board of Education.
Michael Poehl, Treasurer.
Nathaniel Lewis, Board Trustee.
Rans Williams, Board Trustee.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Debbie Trump, Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Joan Du Barry, Director for Human Resources Operations.
And Linda Wood, Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
Now, before any rumors start flying around here, let's just put all the rumors to rest. Our dear Superintendent is at home recuperating from having surgery on her knee. And I spoke to her just before the meeting. She's doing fine. She's not very happy about not being here tonight. She's so excited about all the things that are taking place at the beginning of the school year, but she has a take message that will be presented later. And you'll hear from her at that time, okay? This time, I would like to ask for a motion to go into closed session immediately following the board meeting to discuss a personnel issue. Is there a motion?
Oh, no.
It's moving in support of the Secretary's call for a vote.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poehl?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Vice President Capps?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes. And being that it's early in the year, we don't really have anything to present in terms of students or staff, so I'm going to turn right over to Mr. McKenna. Oh, you're right. We have with us, while we're still doing introductions, in back we have Chuck Capps who's doing the video for tonight, and we have Eric Hinton who is doing our audio for us tonight. Thank you, Eric. Thanks for coming in. Okay, now, I'm going to turn it over to the Board of Superintendent, to Mr. David Turner.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board. Good evening, public. Welcome back to the school year. It was extremely brief because some of us stayed here this time. Many of us were here the entire time, including myself and all of the staff that are with you today. Well, welcome back. Great start to the 12th, 13th school year. I will be brief. The Superintendent did prepare a presentation on two projects, engagement with the community this summer, one of the Stuff the Bus initiatives, and the other is the Back to School Fair. And she made sure that we get this recorded and she's going to bring it to us now in the form of a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to the community, to the Board, to the staff, and to our students. This is Dr. Wanda Coop Robinson, Superintendent, Southfield Public Schools. I'm really sorry that I can't be there in person. In fact, this will be the first September board meeting that I've ever missed, and it's the start of school. And I know that all of you know how excited I am about the beginning of school. But unfortunately, I had knee surgery, so I won't be able to hobble in to be with you this evening. But I did want to give my report. It has been a fun time here at Southfield Public Schools. We have been busy this summer, and I wanted to share that with all of you. In our summer outreach program, we began with Stuff the Bus. As you know, our monies have been limited severely, so we have had to look for other ways to bring resources into the school district. With our Stuff the Bus program, we were able to bring in supplies for our K through eight students. We had Stuff the Bus initiatives happening all over the city, including Michigan First Credit Union, Denso, the Southfield Public Library, Sam's Club, and many, many other sites. We want to say a special thank you to the entire community for coming out and bringing our supplies and donations. It will help us as we start this school year with our budget. Students will be able to use these supplies, and principals will be able to move those monies toward activities. I also like to say a special thank you to Durham School Services because they provided the buses and volunteered the drivers to come and pick up the supplies and to help us stuff those buses. In addition to our Stuff the Bus activity, we also had a Back to School Fair. Our Back to School Fair was very successful this year. We went at it in a big way. We had board members as well as Radio One's tune-ups. We had the mayors of Southfield, Lankos, and Southfield City come, and our Back to School FCS offsters who were there. And these were our students who have won numerous awards throughout the school year. It was a fun time for all. Every single building administrative team was there under their tent to tell you all about the wonderful services that they have in their school. So it was a one-stop shop. You could come and find out what was happening in the school. You could also get vision and dental screening. You could have fun, a little ice cream. You could jump around on the play, the Playmobil that we had. And guess what else? You could also get a free lunch. It was a good time. And you could also get haircuts and massage therapy, too, for the adults. We want to thank everyone for participating with us and for over 2,000 community members coming out to share that time with us at Southfield High on the football field. But more specifically, we're going to have to say an individual thank you to all of our sponsors who stepped up. They went beyond the call of volunteers and things that they did with us, and we want to say thank you to them. Our sponsors are Churchill Wells, Sam's Club, Durham School Services, Kensington Church, the Quonis Club of Detroit, Denso, Michigan First Credit Union, This Frame of Southfield, Michigan Mutual Financial, the Fathers Group, Southfield Public Library, Art Van Furniture in Southfield, Sprint by PCS Mobile Solutions in Southfield, St. Davis Episcopal Church, Shields Restaurant, Sam's Club, Pizza Populous, Conderosa Steakhouse in Southfield, Panera Bread, Kroger, Gainesville USA, Everest Institute, Bright Smile, Project Kids site, University of Detroit Mercy School of Dentistry, Bill Belen Dental Hygiene Society, Office Depot, and the Southfield Public School parent network. I want to thank all of you again for participating and supporting the school district. And I just want to say to the Board and the community that we will have a fantastic year and thank you for your continued support. Have a good one.
Thank you. In addition, the Superintendent thanks a lot of folks, and I want to thank the staff that participated in both of those events, primarily the teachers, the secretaries, the members, as well as the administrative staff who works in this building, came on dedicated and sacrificed their time as well. The Board members that were there and present, we do appreciate it. It was all around, all hands on deck effort, and it went off very, very successful. And I thank Jacqueline Robinson again for her leadership in driving it with Nicole Christian as well. So it was a great event, and I also want to thank those folks as well. Moving along, we have Mr. Michael Boginsky, an educational consultant from Boginsky and Associates, who's here today to present an update on our Ever evolving strategic plan.
Okay. This is just a quick little update to since we last met, which was, I think, back in the spring, I think it was May, that we had a board session to talk about our strategic planning process and what's up and coming. So... Ah, there we go. All right. As you know, we've had a strategic plan in the Southfield Public Schools for quite some time, and every three to five years, we do update it, and that's what we're going to be doing during the school year. This is going to first start with what we call the Process of Self-Study or the Internal Review, because as you'll see in a minute, this is also related to our accreditation visit, which will take place later this year, in the spring of the year. So we're looking at first the internal review process, which calls for us to be doing some evaluation of programs, followed by our external review. And our goal really is to create what we call a high-performance system. We all know that we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. The world is changing. The demographics are changing. The community is changing. The county is changing. The state, the nation. And in that process, we want to be able to make sure that we're challenging our current thinking and maybe thinking outside the box. Okay, there we go. Our first step is we're in the process of doing what we call a data review. And we're looking really at these four areas of data, and all of them will have metrics. But the first area, of course, is student performance. We're going to be examining that. We're going to look back really over a five-year period and look at exactly what's been happening at each level. It's important to note that we're looking at what we call the aggregate of student performance. We're looking at the district student performance. We're not looking at individual schools. We're looking, for our purposes, we want to know how is the system working in terms of student achievement, student performance. We're going to also review what we call program data. Program data is all the support services and all the things connected with students, including our professional development program, our transportation system, and all of that. And then, thirdly, we're going to look at what we call community data. And you'll see in a minute, we're in the process of beginning to do some survey work, which got underway, I believe, this week, right, Linda?
Actually, it started last week.
Last week, yes. We're asking parents and community members for their input before we go to the update session, which we'll note in just a moment. I guess this is not working, but you are working bad there, right? Justin Tomfo. Okay, so here are some dates that you might want to make note of, okay? As we said, we're already underway with our current program initiatives and looking at our current programs, and we're gathering data. We want to make decisions that we call, that are data-based, that have evidence to support whether we're seeing gains or we're seeing challenges. We have a community forum scheduled for next Monday, September the 17th, and letters and invites have gone out. That'll take place at...
Southfield High School Commons.
Commons, okay. You're all welcome to come. And like we did last time, these will be a series of focus groups where we'll ask some specific questions and try to get input from the community about where we should go with the future of our school district. Already, we have student surveys that are available, and we're going to be surveying students grades three through 11, I believe, in every school, in every school. So if some of your students come home and say, "I have to do a survey today," that's what we're talking about. We're trying to have all the students surveyed. We'd like to hit 100% if that's possible. We're also going to be surveying staff at all buildings and all departments. And we're also surveying, I think we've got students, parents as well. And most of those parent surveys will take place during the open house. All the surveys, by the way, are going to be online, and we'll have people to assist. And we'd like to have every parent get involved and answer that survey. We've scheduled our strategic planning meeting for December 7th and 8th, like we did last time. We'll convene on a Friday afternoon, and we'll work through the evening and then also finish on Saturday by noon, noon to noon kind of thing. Where we're going to take all of this data and put it together, look at our current plan and say, "Okay, what new initiatives do we need to have strategically throughout the district?" We're then scheduled for implementation beginning in January. Hopefully, we'll have everything ready for the Board to review in January. We'll ask the Board again to approve that, both as policy and policy intent, and look at that, look at the plan as you did last time. We will then have a core team that will begin to work on the specific action plans that will be implemented in February. And then we have our accreditation visit scheduled for, I believe, it's April 16th through 18th, 16th through 19th. And that will be an outside review team that comes in, just like last time, we did that five years ago, and reach an accreditation, recommendation, and decision. Okay, I think that pulls it all together. Any questions, board members? Anyone?
Darryl? I just want to comment on how important it is to have the community input, because we've said all along that Southfield Public Schools is not going to be what the Superintendent wants, what the Board wants. It's going to be what all the stakeholders in the community want in terms of how this strategic plan is put together. And the strategic plan is so important to the Board because it gives us our path forward. So anything that, any decisions that we have to make, if they do not align with that strategic plan, then the decision doesn't go through. It's just that simple. So it's very important to have the input from all the stakeholders. So I implore everybody out there to please get involved in this process. It's extremely important to us, not only as the Board but as the community, that we all have some input here. So please, please, please get involved in this process. It's helped to make us the district that we are right now, and we want to revise this as we go forward. So your input is more than welcome, it's necessary.
And I want to mention also that during the last five years, what we've done is we've had periodic updates, where we've come in and showed the Board with data what kinds of changes have occurred. Now, I want to say upfront that not everything we put in this last strategic plan has been accomplished. And sometimes, because things change as we're going through the process, we have to make adjustments. And that's something that we've done all through the process and will continue to do that. So you, as board members, can expect periodic reports, as we've always done, and your input and questions are always important when that happens. And it also keeps people, shall we say, they hold their feet to the fire, I guess would be the way we put it, with those updates. So thank you very much, and we're going to move this district from good to great. That's what our next steps are all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boginsky. And we will turn the remainder of the report over to my fellow candidates. Let's go.
Good evening. Welcome back. And start the year out with a little bit of good news, and hopefully it'll continue. The MESSPA's Reform Bill was passed and is now law, so that should give us a little bit of relief on the MESSPA's rate. It was supposed to go from 24% up to 27. It should hold steady at 24. There is an injunction against it right now and to stay on the implementation, so we'll know more, you know, at a later date how that's going to happen. Right now, what they're trying to do is to get all the employees to go online and make a choice, because those choices will affect what their pension plan looks like in the future. There's four different choices. But the big part for us is that it will keep our rate down, so that will show some savings for us in our budget, which will be very helpful. And I will keep you updated as I hear more about it.
From Human Resources, I wanted to let you know that we are still in negotiations with the MESSPA unit. We are currently in fact-finding and we're waiting for the judge to appoint a fact-finder for us. It is still ongoing. We met with them recently, but that's where we're at right now. You also have the personnel report, and Mr. Turner has additional information for you on that.
Well, it's my opportunity to give an update for the Board and for the community, and I, too, am excited about starting over and starting a new school year. That's one of the wonderful things about education, about teaching, about being in this occupation, is the opportunities to redo, to restart, to renew, et cetera. And this year, we are starting something that is new, something that I am so confident will help us to be even more strategic and to, as Mr. Boginsky indicated, to move on the trajectory of going from good to great, that pathway. And for this year, and starting this week, as a matter of fact, starting today, we are implementing a process, a new assessment, where we are going to look at every child in grades one through 11 in the areas of reading, language, and mathematics, to see where they are. We have encouraged teachers over the years to conduct three assessments at the beginning of the school year. But oftentimes, what we have not seen is a global look across the district and to see it drill down to every child. We're excited about that. And I have to tell the Board and I have to thank and tell the community how grateful I am for every teacher, every administrator, and the Division of Instruction. There was such a serious effort and a synchronization of energy to implement this assessment and for it to be implemented today. I want to also thank our district administrative team, which happens to be led by Mr. Earl Dixon, George Chapp, Devera, and Howard Butto. Earl Dixon was up until 3:30 this morning, ensuring that every one of our children was taken care of and that the data was uploaded, and I'm just grateful. And I'm grateful for the support of the Board and the superintendents. With that, I would like to make sure that you have a little insight as to what our children are about to undergo. And I have invited for this evening, Mr. Jim Coyle from Northwest Educational Assessment, who's going to give us a little insight into what our children are about to engage in, the Measures of Academic Progress Assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wood, and thank you for the invitation. We at NWEA, our mission, as you can see on the screen, is partnering to help all kids learn. So I'm going to do my four-hour standing, 10 minutes or less tonight, so I'm going to try to condense it as much as I can. But I wanted to point out our mission, because the mission at NWEA and the mission that we like to extend to our partnering districts and to our public is focusing on all kids. It's not those kids who are less than proficient or those challenged learners. It's every child along our spectrum, from the very low achieving to the high achieving kids, because it's really all about growth for kids. And so as you're moving into this assessment, we're looking at a systemic approach to that assessment, and it's partnering, not only NWEA partnering with Southfield Public Schools and other schools in Michigan around the country, but it's also partnering with the kids. It's partnering with parents to extend that learning team beyond just the teacher and the student. So with that, I'd like to propose this analogy. Think about our assessment system as a student positioning system, much like a GPS, that's able to identify immediately as the kid sits at the computer, immediately identify where they're sitting instructionally. So the kids can take the assessment in reading, math, and language usage very quickly. And at the end of that time, what we're able to determine is the instructional level of the child on a scale. And with that student positioning system, we're able to identify where they are today and project where they need to be tomorrow and the day after and by the end of the year. So with that, we can provide a learning team. So if you're thinking about the assessment, the student positioning system, the system that the children in Southfield Public Schools are going to be using is called Measures of Academic Progress and MAP for Primary Grades. It's a universal screener, so we look at all kids and identify where everyone is on this learning spectrum. It's adaptive. So it looks a little bit like this. As the kid sits at the computer, they're taking a test that's dynamically designed just for that individual student as they're taking the test. No two students will take any test that's identical. So right away, the kids become engaged, because as they answer questions correctly, they're getting higher level questions. As they're answering questions incorrectly, they're getting lower level of questions. So the system adapts. And bottom line is that the end of the assessment, the students understand where they are instructionally, and everybody in the learning team understands where the skills and concepts are that the kids need to learn today. It's a grade-independent scale, so we're not looking at grade level. We're not trying to determine whether that third grader is proficient or that sixth grader is proficient. We're trying to determine where they're learning. Proficiency is important. It's important to understand the growth model. So with that, think about these two assessments as one test. Think about your first graders taking a test this week. They're going to start a test. They're going to finish their test in about half an hour to 45 minutes. They're going to get a score that's going to give them an instructional level, a list of skills and concepts for everybody in the learning team to focus on. It's going to give them a growth score saying, "This is where I am today, and you know what? This is where I should be by the end of the year." So that's student positioning system. Because we're much better off, we can get to where we want to be if we really know where we want to go. So the system helps define where we want to go. So they finish the test in the fall. When they take a winter interim test, when they start their test, it starts where they left off, and it measures growth, and it measures how many skills that they learned in that period of time. And it continues to do that until you end up testing the... They take their last test in 11th grade. So they're taking one test that will start this week for the low first graders. They will continue that test for several years. So with that, think about our scale. Now, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the scale, but what I want you to do is understand a little bit of the concept, because kids are competing against themselves. They're competing to learn a new skill and to measure growth. So if we have three kids, Daniel, Grace, and Norm, they're all fifth-grade kids. They take a test, they have different scores. What we immediately know is Norm has a 212 on our scale. He's right about on grade level with those skills in fifth grade that he should be learning. Daniel is a little less than confident learner. He has some growth. And what our system is able to do is identify what skills and concepts Daniel needs to be able to make that growth. And Grace, our high-achieving student, we want to continue Grace on the growth trajectory. And this is what it looks like. If you think about Daniel, our low-achieving student at the beginning of the year, if we look at typical growth for low-achieving kids, and we only look at what's typical, as we follow that line up, Daniel is still going to be less than grade level by the time he gets to grade 11. So what we need to do is identify the skills and concepts and look at that adjusted growth rate, figure out how much he needs to grow to bring him up. I wish in the days that I was a teacher, I spent 30 years in public education, that I was able to identify exactly where every child in my classroom was sitting, because I believe every teacher wants to be a better teacher, every parent wants to be a better parent. So what we're helping you do is provide you with lists of skills and concepts to make that happen. At the other end of the spectrum, we have Grace, very high-achieving student. But what we know, what research shows about Grace, is if we don't challenge Grace with new skills and concepts across grade levels, her growth actually declines a little bit across the years. So with that, teachers get the information the morning after testing. So if they test it today, tomorrow morning, they're going to have access to that information. It will group kids according to the skills that they need to learn. Teachers can access this immediately, begin to drill down. It then provides information... We're going to look at one child up here, so you can see one child in math, and then we begin to break the data apart to look at the skills and concepts that are most appropriate. And as we look at a student in this case, we're looking at a student like Daniel, a less than confident, low-achieving student. We can see how he's doing in numbers and operations, how he's doing in algebra, how he's doing in geometry, and so on. And then by clicking on the student's name, we can provide information like this, not only for teachers, but for parents. Parents, how many of you in the room are parents? How many of you ask those good questions when kids walk in the door, like, "First of all, how was your day? What did you learn today? Tell me one significant thing that you learned today, other than what you had for lunch that you liked or didn't like, or whatever." Think about, it's difficult for us to boil it down, our whole day, into one or two statements. So with this, teachers will focus on anything in the middle column based on the student's skills and concepts. We want parents to become as involved in the kids' learning and have them have those lists that the teachers have that are going to focus on growth. Because again, if we know where we're going, we're much likely to get there. So as you can see where the red arrow is, those are the skills and concepts that Daniel, as a fifth-grade student, will be working on. In that same classroom, we have another student, Norm. Norm has a different score. Those are the skills and concepts that Daniel will be working on, because he's at a different level of learning. It's still talking about old numbers and mathematics, but it's a different level of skill, because that's what they're ready to learn today. Not every child's at the same place. And our third student is Grace. That's what Grace is ready to learn. So parents... So parents, pick one or two of those things, ask your kids about, challenge them with some games or some activity. In this case, rounds to the nearest million. Help your child round to the nearest million. Help your child order a number through the billions using symbols. Help them identify and work with fractions. Some of those statements may be beyond my ability to work with my child. When my kids got to algebra, I said, "Guys, you're on your own. Dad can't help you there, but I can help you with the other stuff." So we know there's not going to be a lot, everything that parents can help with, and teachers won't be able to do all of it. Think about the power of the teachers and the kids and the parents having all the same information to focus on measuring growth, because it really is all about growth. So if you go back to our student positioning system and think about that, we've identified where kids are, and if we know where we're going, we're much more likely to get there. I drove in today. I could simply get in my car and drive around and hope that I find Southfield, Michigan, or I could plug it into my GPS, and I call the little lady who talks to me, Susan, in the car. She tells me when I need to turn right, when I need to turn left. She creates that pathway to get me to where I want to go. We help teachers and parents create that pathway to help kids learn, focus on growth. So thank you for the opportunity to share that. If you have any questions, Dr. Wood, I'm sure, and Earl will have lots of answers for you, and I can always provide any information.
I want to thank you so much. Any questions by the Board this moment? Well, I'd like to just make sure that all the Board members and our community does know that on our website, we have a little bit of information about this assessment and links that parents can visit and community members can visit to learn a little bit more before we have some additional community meetings, because we want everyone to understand about what we're doing instructionally with our students. Again, I'd like to thank you so much, Mr. Coyle, for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll turn it over to Shemanda Smith for a report from the Head Start Policy Council.
Everyone has a presentation today, it looks like. Thanks, President Buchanan. The Head Start Policy Council met yesterday at 9:30 a.m. at Bussie regarding updates from the Director, Ms. Janice Hill, who's in the audience.
I'm Phil.
So we processed over three hundred and forty applications. In fact, during the weeks of August 20th through September 7th, two hundred and fifty new families came to the Bussie campus interested in early childhood education, and twenty-five were returning families. Our data management system is up and running. That is through COPA, COPA Data. The PIR, or Program Information Report, was completed and submitted to the region, which is Chicago, on August 30th, 2012. The QIP and the CAP were both updated, and in general, corrective dates have been established, and I'd say ninety-four percent of the things on this improvement plan and compliance plan are already done. So that's fantastic, and that's a testament to the Director at Bussie Head Start. Just a quick recognition for two outstanding teachers. Ms. Megan Michael and Camille Douglas are now certified high-scope teachers. I took a second, and you can take a picture of that website, because I'm sure you don't want to write it down, but, and visit and basically learn that some of the qualifications to be certified high-scope are to demonstrate high-quality programming and implementation, present daily plans, and knowledge and use of the Child Observation Record, or CORE, and it's a three-year certification. Bussie is rescheduled for relicensing this year, and our current license does expire on October 31st. Also, Bussie is going through the NAEYC accreditation, and what is NAE again, Ms. Hill?
The National Association for the Education of the Young Child.
National Association for the Education of the Young Child accreditation this upcoming With regard to upcoming events, parent orientation, one was held yesterday. There was a hundred and twelve RSCPs for yesterday's event. Tomorrow is Wednesday, September 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and so far, there were sixty RSCPs for that parent orientation. High-scope training for staff will be September 11th, 13th, 14th, and 21st. The children start school Monday, September 17th, and as a quick little note, there are a hundred and twenty-eight days of instruction for Head Start, a hundred and twenty-eight. September 7th, we have pedestrian vision screening on September 24th and pedestrian training on September 25th. Parent representative election will be September 27th. Health and Safety Advisory Committee, or HSA, meets on 9/27. Head Start Awareness Day, very important, highlight it, underline it, October 9th, 2012. Dental checkups and hearing screenings are both in October, and celebrity readers will be returning, or coming, I should say, in November. With regard to our budget, the award of the grant, as you can see, is $1.3 million. Extender's $61,625.39, or 4.73% of the budget. There was an additional grant awarded of $9,169 due to a federal bill providing Head Start staff a cost of living increase. And I'd like to just plug that one of our biggest Head Start supporters in Washington, D.C., is President Barack Obama. Last year's grant was $1,241,994.61 of the IHS.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate Ms. Hill on the recruitment this year. In order to be in compliance, Head Start must have a minimum of 190 students. And do you have how many this year, applied?
Yes, ma'am. We have, well, we have actually processed over three hundred applications, and today we are actually full with a waiting list.
Wonderful. Thank you for running a very successful program. Thank you. Thank you, Ms.
Moving on, let me move to unfinished business, which we have none, so we'll go right to the action items. This time, we'll take a motion to open and approve the consent agenda. Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. President, before we move forward with the consent agenda, there is one recommendation we need to make. We need to move action item number personnel action number thirty-four off to be considered in closed session, which you already, I'd like to move and drop this over to me.
Okay. It's been, it's been, we've been supportive. Any questions? There are none, Secretary. Just with this second thing, which you talked about.
I'm sorry, you said questions. I did have one comment, which is just that in review of all of that, technology seems to be ever increasing in expenditure, and I just wanted to make the public aware of that. It's essential to have good technology, teachers, high scope, and all the other ones that you see in your handout. So I don't want it to be this, or this block, or very similar. Myself?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yeah.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Katz?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes.
unanimous.
Okay. This time, we'll take a motion to open and approve report 51-05. We approve of the shared time agreement.
And then we open report 51-05?
Yes. And move it back, but we should turn and continue some background.
Certainly. If it pleases the Board, before we move into that, I did want to recognize a few individuals that were handled in that personnel action. One of the most notable here, a position that we had in the district that was formerly residing in the SCA bargaining unit, which was our athletic director position, through negotiations and talks with the union, that has become an affiliated position that does not have union representation. And we have recently hired two athletic directors, under budget and on target, to take care of the athletic programming in the district, which extends now from K definitely through to 12, but our focus right now is from six to 12, K all the way down to 12. And I want to introduce them to the Board, and hopefully have the opportunity to say a little bit about themselves, and come around and shake hands. And you will notice in the personnel action, at the beginning of the year, there's charted a lot of activity because of recalls, rehires, transfers, and so forth. These are two positions that I wanted to call particular attention to and make note of that.
Can we just go to the podium?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Anika McEvans, and I've been hired as the Athletic Director over at Southfield High School and the feeder programs at the Southfield High School. I'm not a stranger to Southfield High School or Southfield Public Schools. You may have heard my two little ones in the hallway. I have three children that are Southfield School, Southfield Public School students. I've been a basketball coach at Southfield High for the past four years. My husband is a football coach with the program. Prior to coming to Southfield Schools, I was a Title I Administrator at a charter school, and I've worked at every level of the sports, from elementary education all the way through professional sports. So I'm excited to be over this program and bring some exciting things to the district. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Derek Caskies. I'm obviously the new athletic director at Wakeville in most feeder programs. I've come, I've been a football coach, a softball coach. I've coached anywhere from eighth grade to the college level. I've been about ten years in athletic administration. I've also been an assistant principal, principal, interim superintendent. I've won a lot of different transportation director. So I've got a lot of different experiences that bring a lot of unique things to this position, especially being in athletics and all the things that we both have to do. But I'm excited. Being able to build a K-12 program is an exciting thing to be able to do in the support of the Board and Superintendent. And I look forward to being a Charger and a Southfield Public Schools employee for a long time, and I hope to see you all at our games and the public as well, and go Chargers.
Well, I do want to say that Mrs. McEvans, one of her children, is a very talented young basketball player that I've got my eye on, and not only is, you know, is she going to be over there, but I'm also going to be recruiting as well, and I'm glad she's now, I don't, I believe me, I keep my eye on him all the time. And hopefully, he'll be one of our future stars, so.
Well, he played at Southfield High a long time ago.
Okay. I'm playing with him now.
And as they shake hands, we do have a couple of the notable hires that we need to make mention too as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Softball. Welcome. How are you doing? Thank you.
I would also like to introduce to you two new administrators. These are actually staff builds of positions for people who have left the district. I would like to introduce to you Alma Dean. She is our new supervisor for academic achievement. She's been promoted from a teacher in the district and has been promoted to supervisor. I would also like to introduce to you Edwina Hill, who is the new supervisor for state and federal programs.
Now, we have an open item that we're going to go back and return.
Okay. Now, we're going to go back to report 51-05, the shared time agreement. Mr. Turner?
Thank you. Many moons ago, maybe a couple of years ago, we started a talk with some of our non-public schools in our area, in our Southfield area, who had an interest in partnering with the district through a shared time agreement, obviously as permitted through the state school aid, ADAC. And we have now come to a point where we have set forces with ATEVA, ATEVA schools. We've found a way where we can collaboratively work to have an agreement where, one, we provide non-essential and non-core classes, and more AP classes to their students, and one, we're offering to students in our district as well. And that agreement is long, longcoming, and it's taken a lot of hours, but we think it's a good relationship to forge with our partners that are in our district, and we service them and we service our others in several other areas, and this is just another one of our continuing efforts to help the folks in the community.
Now, exactly, shared time agreement, what exactly does that mean? What does that entail?
What it entails is, it can entail a bunch of things. What it entails specifically for us is their students are enrolled in Southfield Public Schools for the specific purpose of us providing to their students non-essential core classes as well as AP classes. We do that as permitted through the state law. We receive the state aid for those students who we will not receive state aid for to provide those services for those students. And that's done through the agreement which you have outstandingly financed and hopefully reviewed. It's only one year, I wouldn't say trial basis, but we definitely see how it looks, and hopefully, if it does work out and the district has a way to continue these services, we'll expand hopefully the scope of services. We'll look at other partners who wish to enter shared time agreements as long as we can provide the services in a mere fashion that we are with ATEVA. We'll look to bring that to the Board as well for consideration. But again, before we get into the long-term, our relationship, we'll try out, we'll see how it goes. We think it's going to provide academic support for their students as well as financial support to the district as well.
And then you did say that this is the only shared time agreement that we have currently?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we had some talks, as you know, with another, another service provider in our city, but it did not, it didn't pan out, couldn't be settled off, so.
Any other questions? Any not?
I'd like to say that it's such like a win-win situation, both for the students and for the district. It works both ways.
You said, any problem?
Yes. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Katz?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes. More President, I failed to mention with the shared time agreement, because it is a teaching premise, we have to work as well with our union partners to also have an agreement to allow this partnership to move forward in the expeditions manner. And I would like to thank you to the Mount, the cooperative looking at the district's bottom line, and our educational efforts at the forefront. So thank you from Master to Union, that was another partnership that worked out well.
Thank you. Signed agreement is in my card, David.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Now come to item number five, gifts to the Board. Mrs. Diane Fox Miller donated $1,000 to the Chinese program at Bernie Kaye School. Her grandson, Christopher Peggus, stated that Chinese is his favorite class. We would like to thank Mrs. Fox Miller for her support of academic achievement. Okay, and we also have information on items on the agenda, report 51-07 and 51-08, which are items that fall below the threshold that requires Board approval. So if you just really need the reading material that will put you to sleep tonight, I suggest you go ahead and read that, and it will aid in your sleep. Okay. We now come to the public participation portion of the meeting, and this is where the public may address matters of concern or interest to the Board. Please note that your comments are generally limited to three minutes. The Board will listen to all comments, but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the Board. The cooperation is appreciated. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board, need a blue card filled out? We need a blue card filled out. I've got the one here, and we have Geraldine Amato. If you could, please, for the record, state your, your name and address.
My name is Geraldine Amato, and I'm living here in Southfield since June. I come to bring to your attention something I have learned, particularly of late. And I'm urging people, in the restraint of this time, I can't really get into all the details, and I hope I can make a coherent three minutes. But I was listening to so-called public radio regarding the Chicago teacher's strike and some of the issues that the controlled press allows to be spoken. And what's not told, many problems that we're having with this economic contraction, is that the economic woes we face have been premeditatedly set in motion. History has been concealed regarding how banks, the owners of banks, the banks of cartels, I call them, three of which are headquartered in Washington DC, gain control of the wealth of the nation through the monetary system. So today, we no longer have what's called lawful money. We have fiat money, which is credit given to us by our masters, and we can use it like company script in the company town. Another way of saying it is on a coast-to-coast federal reservation. It's not that all of the people that work within the federal bureaucracy are involved in this, but the people who control this nation are the ones who control the wealth of this nation. So when they talk about the pensions being insupportable over time, and they have to cut back, and benefits, and classroom sizes have to be enlarged, and evaluations of students have to be done by standardized tests, and students have to be tested through standardized tests, this is control. Those who control the wealth of this nation, control every institution, including school networks. So what can we do about this? That remains yet to be seen, whether there's enough people who have the will, after they come to understand what we're actually facing in this country, to take action. I'm reminded of a saying that is attributed to Henry Ford. I think he may have pronounced the same as a matter of, how would you say, of accomplishment for his class of people, rather than relenting the, or not relenting, but bemoaning the situation. He said, "I believe if the American people really understood the issue of money, there would be an armed revolution by tomorrow morning." Saying that the people have been deliberately deceived about the issue of money. If we study history, and much of it is concealed from us, that's important for us to understand where we're at today, we will come to understand why that is the case. That those who control the wealth of the nation control every institution. We used to call the mainstream press communicator and informational media. We know it's no longer that. We are no longer allowed to communicate with one another through the broadcast media. It's controlled, it's privatized. This flag that we pledge allegiance to...
Mr. Amato, yeah, three minutes are up.
Can I just?
Could you summarize it, please?
This flag that we pledge allegiance to does not represent the republic. It represents a private commercial jurisdiction that is owned by the owners of the banks of cartels. There were five presidents assassinated after the federal constitution has been formed. There's a whole history here that, I wish I could just, just mention some of that, so you could research it yourself. But there were five presidents assassinated because of their confrontation with the central bank at the time. Not because of what we were told about Lincoln and Kennedy.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
I, I just urge people to study the post-revolutionary era and the constitutional conventions and the speeches recorded therein, particularly Virginia Constitutional Convention. I was never told in school that people like Patrick Henry and Richard Henry Lee opposed the adoption of what's now called the U.S. Constitution. We have been put under the control of a central government, which has aggrandized extraordinary power. And we are no longer free agents, free inhabitants of our free lands. We are rezident on the reservation. Any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you very much. Now come to board members. It's time for the board to share their comments with the community. And any board member is free to address any issue that they have. Mr. Williams?
Lewis.
Mr. Lewis? I know your name.
To the citizens of, to the citizens of the city of Southfield, Lakeville, and Southfield Township, I would like to say good evening. I would like to update the community on two major themes that are going to be on the ballot November sixth. The two major proposals is proposal protest of our jobs and proposal stand-up for democracy. The crux of proposal protest for our jobs is to make collective bargaining constitutional. And I want the communities to know that as a proud member of American Federation of Teachers, I promise to stand up for collective bargaining on November sixth. And the reason why is because collective bargaining is more than just the negotiation of salary. But collective bargaining is creating a clean and safe environment for our students. Collective bargaining is about small classroom size. Collective bargaining is about the preservation of the middle class, because organized labor is the only protection of the middle class against tyranny. And that's the reason why, in June of two thousand and nine, I was the only board member to vote against a twenty percent mileage increase, because I support the working of the middle class. And I stand up for those individuals that occupy this facility that strongly protested, those who are great citizens of the community. Secondly, proposal stand-up for democracy deals with the emergency financial law. I oppose it, because I think that it is a heinous miscarriage of justice to put in, to appoint someone to take away the power from the parents, the power from the community, the power from the taxpayer. It is a heinous miscarriage of justice to take away the power from the community. Lastly, I want to point out that one of the biggest conundrums in education is that on the federal level, it only makes up three percent of the budget. Last year, the federal government spent over four hundred billion dollars in defense. The money that we spent in defense is more money than all of our European allies combined. If we were to put that money in education, it would have changed it all around. So lastly, I want to say that we as a people, we as a nation, have to put our priorities together. Thank you, and God bless.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Just a few brief things. First, on this Patriot Day, I'd be remiss, I know we had the moment of silence, but I did wanna, on my own, just let, let the public know that today isn't a day that we just sit around and not think about what happened eleven years ago. And it certainly was on my mind. I'm anxious today to get home, so I can see the light. I was gonna be in New York, but I said I'll stay here for the meantime.
I appreciate it.
Finally, I was given this by a resident about students reinventing Michigan competitions, the two thousand and twelve students reinventing Michigan competition, improving the state's K-12 education. Upon reading it, I found, I realized, first of all, it's for college students. But I decided to go ahead and mention it anyway, because it's important for us, as residents, as board members, teachers, and administrators, to encourage them to come and look at Southfield Public Schools and see how improving the state's K-12 education system starts right here. When I read it, I, I realized that we're doing this. It's not rocket science here, it's just strategic planning and, and following a, a system of goals and tackling one at a time. So, students reinventing Michigan competitions, come to Southfield Public Schools.
Yes, I would like to remind everybody out here and out there that November seventh is election day, November sixth, thank you for the correction. But yes, tell your friends, your neighbors, your relatives to vote on November sixth. And when you get to the ballot, be sure and look at the nonpartisan section of the ballot at the end and know whom you're voting for, because whoever sits in a judicial position has a mighty power over all of us. If you've been reading the news, you know. So vote, vote the whole ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Captain. Thank all trustees for your comments. They've been very enlightening. I just want to welcome everybody back to the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen school year. We have some very high goals set for this year. We have a great start to the school year with our kickoff, and I think everybody was pretty motivated when we left, you know, that lunching that we had out there on the Southfield High School football field. I mean, just the energy, you could feel it. It was powerful. And, you know, I hope that continues, because, you know, we've been through a lot in this district, you know, and we're at a place of, I want to say a place of harmony, a place where everybody's starting to see where, where we can go. I mean, I think we, we've been through all the difficult times, and now we're getting to the point where we can start setting the trend. We are the lighthouse district. This is the district that everybody looks to. And just seeing all the things that are, you know, set up over here, I think that this year is gonna be a breakout year for us. And I'm really, really excited about this upcoming school year. So, again, I want to ask the community to come out and get involved in the process of developing our strategic plan that keeps, that gives us our marching orders to tell us the direction that the district is going. And it's not gonna be the district that we want, it's gonna be the district that everybody, all stakeholders go into it. Retirees, you know, empty masters, it doesn't matter. If you're a part of the Southfield community, and you want to have a say in what Southfield Public Schools look like, then it has been coming upon you to come get involved. Our future meeting, September eighteenth, we have student hearings in October ninth at seven o'clock, our next regular board meeting. And if no other business comes before this, finally, we'll take a motion for us to adjourn.
Court?
This meeting is now adjourned. And remember, we're going in closed session tomorrow. Thank you all for coming out tonight.